States once an employee's current wage exceeds the assigned salary range of their position, that those employees still receive pay for performance or merit pay. However, rather than having that increase added to their base, once they exceed the salary range, we would then provide them a one-time lump sum payment. So we currently have a policy in place that supports the one-time lump sum payment. It is designed currently that if an employee exceeds the salary range, the first year, they would still receive their merit increase to their base. Once they enter into year two, they would then receive the one-time lump sum payment. We are recommending that we change that to, once they actually exceed the range, the salary range maximum, they then start receiving the one-time lump sum payment for merit. In addition to that, we have an internal alignment process that's a part of the budget process every year. It's currently on a three-year cycle. We wanted to recommend to you today that we move that to a two-year cycle, thus allowing us to ensure that job descriptions, job requirements, and associated pay and salary ranges are commensurate upon the changes needed to job descriptions and the things that we're asking of our employees to do as related to their jobs. As quickly as we're growing, jobs are changing, and we want to make sure that we are in alignment with that effort. And then we would like to be able to provide total compensation and benefit statements to our employees on an annual basis. So then I'd like to transition to our city benefit program. So as you know, we came before you last year for the FY19 budget and asked for the funding to secure a third-party vendor to provide a benefit valuation, which is simply a study or an analysis of our current employee benefit program compared to what we consider other market competitors and their benefit programs. We included to be, for that to include both private and public sector employers within the Treasure Valley and across the state of Idaho. We secured Gallagher and Company to provide that benefit valuation for us, and the recommendations that we're bringing forward to you today are on behalf of the results provided to us from that study. And here they are. So the first one that we're recommending is a Percy 401K employer match of 100% up to 2% of the employee's salary. This would be available to all employee groups across the city. The estimated costs are listed there for you, and the implementation logistics to support these recommendations, we would need to go ahead and work on developing a policy to support that benefit. The second benefit that we're recommending to you today is a vacation buyback for general, or excuse me, for general employees and police department employees, up to 40 vacation hours one time per year. That is available to general and police department employees because due to at this time, the fire department already has a vacation buyback within their contract. To support the benefit of a vacation buyback, we would then need to move forward with developing a policy. The third benefit enhancement that we're recommending today would be an adjustment to our education reimbursement program. Currently today, our program allows employees to receive up to $2,000 per fiscal year for their education efforts. We would like to make a recommendation to increase that to $2,600 per fiscal year. There's some costs there that are associated with that in front of you today, and of course, the implementation requirements would involve us updating our current education reimbursement And the fourth one there would be a new benefit, if you will, which would be to offer a two-weeks paid maternal and paternity leave to employees. This would be available also to all city employees in alignment with our current FMLA policy. You'll see that there's no additional cost for us to support that, and the implementation requirements for that particular benefit would also include us developing a policy and bringing that back to you for review. So what I'm looking for today on behalf of the benefits committee is seeking your approval of these recommendations to be incorporated and included into the FY20 budget. Upon your approval, then we will begin working on the implementation requirements, policies, those types of things that we would bring back in front of you all for review and consideration no later than September 10th of 2019. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Crystal. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Crystal, could you go into a little more depth about the maternal, paternal leave? I guess I'm curious why there's no cost, if they're not using their vacation, or they are?
Yeah, so I will invite Todd to come up to speak to the financials behind it. What I can give you a more in-depth description is currently today when our employees go out on an approved leave for maternity or paternal reasons, they are requested and required to use their vacation and their sick leave to make their paycheck whole. The benefit enhancement that we are providing to you today to help us enter into a more competitive arena with our benefit program amongst our local competitors for attraction and retention of talent would be then for the city to pay the first two weeks of that paternity or maternity leave, and then they would continue to utilize their sick and vacation time to make their paycheck whole.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Laura Roberts, the cost to the city is no cost on this particular report because the way we look at an annual salary is if an employee earns $50,000 a year and they take vacation or sick, they're still going to get their paycheck of $50,000 a year. So the same would apply here. If we agreed to allow them to take two weeks off, we're still going to honor their annual salary of $50,000. So there's no tangible wage cost. Now, you could argue that there's some production cost, but we don't go there with that analysis. From a wage cost analysis, though, it's zero cost because we still will recommend or represent their annual salary that you agreed to pay this employee for that 12-month period.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. You're welcome.
Okay, other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Crystal, I just have, I guess, one question about moving HR to a two-year cycle. I know that doing that is not an easy task for you and your staff, and I assume you're bringing this recommendation because it's what's best for our employees, which I applaud. Just curious, from an HR management side, are you able to achieve that with your current resources, was moving towards that, and maybe some of the extra demands of your office going to necessitate additional staffing resources for you in the future?
Counselmember Kavner, thank you very much for your question, and I appreciate your consideration for the staff that we have in place to support the employees that we do each and every day. To answer your question, it would be at this point in time a partnership between the Human Resources Office and the HR staff, as well as with an external consultant who would help us until such time as I am in front of each of you asking for an additional resource that would focus on compensation on behalf of the city on a day-to-day basis.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that was included in the budget that was presented. The consultant amount was already in there.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. It has been included in the HR's budget.
And that two-year cycle is the cycle that our police step plan and our union negotiations are on, so this brings alignment across the board. Any other questions? You will note that we had put a placeholder in the budget for $720,224, I believe, something like that. And $275,000 of that was for, was a placeholder for the compensation. That has been removed, so the amount is now $445,223.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it doesn't look like there's any further questions.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so Item 5A is, and now that is an action item, so counsel, we would like your direction on the presentation that was in front of you, so we can...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, and we'll need to, I'm sorry, just one last thing. As Crystal noted, we will need to bring policies back prior to rollout, so those will be coming back to you in the fall. Mr. Borton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Crystal, good job. As part of the committee, the work that Tracy and Todd and Lorelei, and I think the discussions were very active and engaging, lots of pros and cons. I think it was much more thorough than maybe I had anticipated when I got started working on it. So I appreciate the good work that everyone did, and Todd in particular, the data to help true up what the costs of options were was very, very helpful. So appreciate the work done by everybody on it. I move that we approve the recommendation of the Compensation Committee as presented, and for staff to take those necessary steps to implement it, as Crystal has just indicated.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
All eyes wish carried. And I will apologize, this, as Mr. Borton had noted, was active and sometimes maybe a little unwieldy, but there was great discussion. It took a different look numerous times, and the process did take longer than we expected, and my apologies for that. But thank you for all your good work.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council members, for your support on behalf of the benefits committee or the Compensation Committee. We greatly appreciate this.
Thank you. Okay, 5A, under Community Items Presentations, we have Compass here to discuss high-capacity Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. Do you need my...
Thank you for being here.
Name and address and all that.
Yes, please.
Rachel Hukala, 700 Northeast Second Street, Suite 200, Meridian.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you for having me today. I'm an assistant planner at Compass, and I'm here today just to tell you about what we've been doing with high-capacity transit and some of the history and next steps for that at Compass. So I'll go over some definitions, history, current planning activities, what we're doing next. So just to get on the same page, high-capacity transit is basically just a public transportation system that carries more people either with larger vehicles or more frequent service. And a fixed guideway really just means that it's a public transportation system that operates on a set path, like a rail or a bus rapid transit system. So the three main modes that we are looking at are bus rapid transit, or BRT, which is a fixed stop bus system that operates on a fixed path. Usually, it will be bus-only lanes or high-occupancy vehicle lanes, so that those buses are able to move more quickly. They usually come more frequently than regular buses, and they have stations that are more like light rail kind of platforms, not just regular bus stops, for quicker, for allowing passengers to get on and off more quickly. And then light rail is the middle picture, bus rapid transit's the left one there. Light rail is a light train that operates on a rail. It has shorter cars and also loads some platforms, and it's very similar to bus rapid transit in the stop spacing and the frequency of service. And then commuter rail is the right picture. That is often more geared towards commuters, so it takes people from the outlying areas of a city to the central city. Usually, it's the highest capacity, and they are the fastest, it's the fastest mode, so it's really efficient getting people in and out of the city. There are usually fewer stations than the light rail and bus rapid transit. And all three of these modes, in contrast to the regular bus, they all operate more frequently, have higher capacity, and fewer stops. So quick history, as you may know, long ago, there was an interurban passenger train that went all around the valley, and Amtrak even operated service for passengers until 1997. After that, there was kind of a gap, and people still wanted passenger service on the rail line. So in 2003, there was the Rail Corridor Evaluation Study, which looked at the Boise Cut Off rail line, which is that rail line that goes from Nampa to Meridian to Boise and then south. That study looked at what it would take to upgrade the rail line to be used for commuter rail, and how they might be able to acquire it for public transportation, and just the costs and everything associated with that. And then in 2009, we had the Treasure Valley High Capacity Transit Study, Priority Corridor, Phase One Alternatives Analysis, which looked at the different options or alternatives for alignments for the rail service. Because if we go for federal funding for this project in the future, we'll need to look at all the alternatives and make sure we selected the best option for the region. So this study looked at eight different alignments, as you can see on the map, Chindon, Eustick, Fairview, the rail corridor, Franklin, Interstate 84, Overland, and Victory. And it analyzes many different aspects and came out with three preferred alignments, or these were the three alignments they recommended to move forward into the next step of the alternatives analysis. And those were the Boise Cut Off rail line, Fairview, and Franklin roads. And they recommended specific modes for each one also. So for the Boise Cut Off, they recommended that be light rail or bus rapid transit. And it says bus rapid transit exclusive, that just means it would have its own exclusive lane or space that's not used for anything else versus mixed traffic, which is shared right-of-way, which is basically what we have today. Bus is just operating in the car lane. And then as a secondary option, they recommended commuter rail, but the other two, they determined to be more feasible. And as you can see, as I mentioned, commuter rail has fewer stops, only one or two in Meridian, whereas the light rail or BRT would have probably two to four stops in Meridian. And then for the Fairview alignment, they recommended bus rapid transit exclusive again. And these stops are not set in stone, these are just kind of what they decided for the modeling and analysis that they did. And then for Franklin Road, they recommended BRT exclusive, or the secondary option would be light rail. So why are we even interested in high-capacity transit? Communities in Motion 2040, 2.0, Compass's Long Range Transportation Plan is projecting a lot of growth between now and 2040. We estimate the population for the region will be over 1 million in 2040. And with all of these increased population and households and jobs, we'll need to find a way to get all these people around to and from their homes and jobs, and find places for them to live, and it'll also increase freight traffic. A lot of the major employers are located along the I-84 corridor and in the major central business districts, so the high-capacity transit here would alleviate some of that traffic on the interstate and on all of our roads, really, will just continue to increase. It would also help with local and regional transportation, because people can get around even within Meridian better or throughout the region, and also just providing more mobility options for people, so they maybe don't have to drive into Boise every day or back and forth between Meridian and Boise. So some of the things we've been doing more recently, last year, we finished a freight study that looked at all of the freight going on throughout the region, and it did look at the rail corridor specifically, so that gave us some insight into the customers that are there. The study identified 80 customers along the Boise Cut Off, and approximately 60 to 70 of them are currently active, so we would definitely want to work with them if we end up moving forward with the rail corridor for public transportation. And it also identified only two trains per weekday are operating on the Boise Cut Off right now. In bigger cities, some of the public transportation systems that share the rail with freight have a lot more freight going on, so that's not too much in our region. Also, in the Long Range Transportation Plan, Communities in Motion 2040, 2.0, we came up with some planning level cost estimates for the high-capacity transit. These estimates were for commuter rail, which is kind of the middle ground between bus rapid transit. It's more than bus rapid transit, but less than light rail. So we estimated 339 million in capital costs for commuter rail, or, and in addition to that, $10 million operating, and that's every year. We didn't estimate right-of-way yet, that'll be another large cost, especially if it's, if we end up with the Boise Cut Off. And this map shows the rail along both the Boise Cut Off and Fairview. That just illustrates there's multiple options. We wouldn't use both of those. And it also identifies the State Street bus rapid transit, and then all of the other lines are the 2040 public transportation bus system that would be needed to support the high-capacity transit. So it'll be really a full system. We can't just put in a commuter rail. We need to have the supporting bus system in place. And with that, that'll be much higher investment required than just this 339 to get that service. So we're reassessing what the assumptions used in the 2009 study and what we thought we needed back then, and kind of revisiting it and deciding if that's still what we need today. It's been 10 years, so we're thinking about what our vision is now to 2040, and our next long-range plan will be Communities in Motion 2050, so we're looking out 10 years further, and thinking about what trips we want to provide and what the region, what the region's vision really is for a potential high-capacity transit. And we'll take a look again at those alignments, those maybe all eight or maybe just the three that were recommended, decide which ones we want to move forward with into the next kind of alternatives analysis phase. And I just wanted to quickly point to the other high-capacity transit project going around the region. On State Street, they're planning for a bus rapid transit now. This will probably happen sooner than a high-capacity transit, the one that I'm talking about. So it's kind of, we're able to look at this study and get some ideas from them and some strategies for how to phase the system into existence, and looking at funding and supportive land use needs and all those sorts of things. This image is from the Transit Oriented Development Plan that they just completed. So those are a lot of things we need to consider as well. So the next steps for our planning, the first thing is we're going to look for a consultant to help us develop these options better. We're hoping to have an RFP out this fall, and we're hoping that they will be able to help us develop better cost estimates, because like I mentioned, ours didn't have right-of-way, and they were kind of higher planning level, so a consultant can help us really drill down better, find out what this will really cost. We'll ask them to revisit the 2009 study and other past work, so that they can look at the assumptions and kind of help us figure out which alignments are the best ones and refine them more, so we know what the alignments and stops will look like, and work into public input, which will be the next thing. Probably next year, later, maybe fall, we're hoping to do public input to get some ideas about what the public thinks about high-capacity transit for this region, and kind of what their values are and what they would want to see in a high-capacity transit system. We won't be asking them which alignment they like best or things like that, but more like, how fast do you want to be able to get from Meridian to Boise? Do you want to be able to make a lot of stops, go to the grocery store, or do you just want to go right to Boise to go to your job? Or whatever it might be. And then we're going to be going back to Union Pacific. In the past, they haven't been very interested in thinking about public transportation on their corridor.
That's putting it nicely.
So we're hoping to get together with our stakeholders and partners, local partners, and think of strategies to approach them. And once we have this better cost estimates from the consultant and the public input, we can, you know, bring an actual cost to them, once we know what the right-of-way might cost and those sorts of things, just kind of have more defined things we're looking for, and be able to tell them what we have, what the public wants. And then we'll be looking at a funding plan, because we really need a dedicated funding source to make this all happen. Operations are an annual cost, so we can't just fund this once and forget about. We really need something that we can depend on every year, a sustainable funding source, so that we can make the system work. And then the system needs, I mentioned earlier, we need this full bus system in the region to support the high-capacity transit, because people will need to get to and from it. They don't all live right there along the corridor. We'll need to make all these other connections, north, south, and elsewhere in the region, to make it a complete system. We'll need to look at land use policies and plans and preserving right-of-way, and looking at supportive density, and then also getting all of the other modes together, coordinating to make it really a good regional system, because we'll need to make sure we have the bicycle and pedestrian networks in place and coordinate with freight, so those aren't conflicting, and the road network, we'll need to consider. And all of this planning that I mentioned will be feeding into our next long-range plan, the Communities in Motion 2050, so it'll all come together there. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Burnet.
Madam Mayor, thank you for your presentation. It was good, very insightful. You know, this is, this is, you know, I guess recently, I looked at some numbers at a Compass board meeting recently, and where Boise State reached out and did some polling, you know, some questions to ask, what the, what the level of interest was in public transit in our area, and it's actually, it's really high. And, and not only did they poll people from Meridian, but Boise and different parts of Kenyon County, and those numbers are pretty much the same wherever you look at. And so I wish we had the option of deciding this on our own, and having the citizens vote through a public option. One of these days, our state legislature is going to come, maybe understand that maybe this is something that's important to different municipalities other than resort towns in our state, and hopefully sooner than later, we can start talking about this. Public transit on this level is really expensive, and so I don't know if we're quite there yet, but I'm glad that, that you're bringing this discussion in front of us and making all municipalities in the Treasure Valley aware of how important public transportation is to our growth and development and economic development as well. So thank you for your, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Counsel's benefit, I got to see this presentation a couple of weeks ago with Transportation Commission, and I want to just first begin by thanking Rachel. I think of every agency that's ever come before us, we inevitably ask, hey, can I get a copy of this presentation? Can I get this document? And sometimes they come, sometimes they come much later. Rachel flipped it around like overnight. It was awesome. I really appreciate that. I just, I want to thank you on the record. A question popped up in my mind, though, from that presentation, this one, and maybe this will be contemplated in the RFP, but to me, the big question about any of these options is who, who's going to lead it? Is that, is that Compass's role? Is that VRT's role? Because, and counsel knows this, we've got to have somebody that's pulling these people together, because when this plan was first put together, there was a lot of conversation about circulators in downtown Boise, and thankfully, that didn't go anywhere. I don't think that that would be benefiting our residents at all today. This takes a real collaborative vision. This takes a real collaborative vision from Caldwell, honestly, I think, to Mountain Home. And I think BRT is the, the appropriate mechanism, but I don't know who's supposed to lead it. And so I guess, I'm assuming you guys have contemplated that, that will hopefully come in the RFP as some recommendations, but if not, that's a piece that I think is going to be really, really critical, is we've got to have an entity that we all get behind in order to make this work.
Thank you. And thank you again for joining us, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Remini. Contact if anyone has any later questions.
Thank you. And counsel, if you would like this, it will be in the public record, right? Very good, thank you. Okay, 6A under Department Reports, we have the Transportation Commission to talk school zone, school zone amendment request.
Madam Mayor, that will be me, representing or carrying forward anyways, the Transportation Commission's recent request to amend a school zone out near Rocky Mountain High School on Linder Road. Let me just back up real quick and just, first of all, inform you that the Meridian Transportation Commission has established a subcommittee, a school zone subcommittee, so there is a kind of a standing committee that does organize itself on an as-needed basis and deals with issues regarding school zones, primarily around public schools in our community. They had need to meet in June and discuss the school zone around Rocky Mountain. This also is related to the parking issues that have also flared up in Paramount, so there are kind of a couple of different issues they were talking about concurrently. But the request that they have for you today is, has to do with the school zone, again, on Linder Road. So let me kind of orient you a little bit. Today, there is an overhead pole about 150 feet north of Caillou's Creek, so the high school on the east side of Linder and, and Caillou's. About 150 feet north on, if you're southbound on Linder Road, there's an overhead school zone flasher in that location. That location is not ideal for two reasons. One, pedestrians have a protected crossing already at the intersection of Caillou's, you push, you push the peg, the pedestrian button, and you're protected traffic stops and you cross the road. Two, people, motorists coming out of Luxa Falls, Kelly Creek, if they turn southbound onto this and go 40 miles an hour, there's no notice that this is a school zone in this area. So police have pulled people over, saying, you're in a school zone, they say, show me where it's, I came from here and out. And so, the request before you today is to ask ACHD to relocate the pedestrian, or, excuse me, the school zone flasher from north of Caillou's to south of Caillou's. So again, then the motorists really are in the school zone. Let me just kind of show you the south side of that, just so you can kind of see the bookend to the school zone flashers. You can see the crosswalk and the stop bars near Divide Creek, so this is the southern boundary of the school zone, so essentially near the south boundary, and, and when this gets relocated, it would be near the north side of the school. So, again, that is the request before you today. I do apologize, you didn't have any of this background information in the packet, I was ill the last part of last week, and so didn't, I wasn't able to put that in the memo, so hopefully, this verbal presentation will suffice this time. But that is the request, that you send a request on to ACHD, because the Transportation Commission has no authority to ask those types of things of the highway district, so they're asking you, on their behalf, to petition ACHD. Madam Mayor, if, if, and the counsel, if you're okay with that, I think an email to their traffic department will suffice in this case, I don't think we need to do a letter or anything like that, but if I do have, I don't even know if it needs a full motion, but, but some authority granted to me to, to send that request to ACHD should you, should suffice. So with that, I will stand for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Caleb, it sure makes a lot of sense, so. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Caleb, I can't remember if this was discussed in the committee or in the Transportation Commission, recognizing it's fairly costly to relocate those poles, was there any conversation about placing just a, a sign as that neighborhood exits that says, "School Zone Time," or when children are present, kind of like we see in other parts of our community?
Madam Mayor.
And why was that not recommended?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I don't think they got into the, I don't recall us getting into the details of, you know, retaking that pole and moving it over and those costs associated with it. It was simply to re-sign, re-notice where the school zone begins. So we'll leave it up to ACHD as to what a methods that, that includes. We would hope they would do that the most economically feasible way. So we didn't, the request wasn't as specific as 150 feet south and with a pole overhead and all that, it's just whatever they need to do to.
Any other questions? Staff is seeking your direction on this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think Caleb did, especially despite being sick, glad you're feeling better. Thanks for the, the report, you always do a great job, Caleb. I think Caleb did a great job summarizing the recommendation of the Transportation Commission. Again, for counsel's benefit, we've got a great subcommittee and really just a stellar Transportation Commission, we should all really be proud. And I know we, we had a commissioner last week that we reappointed, who's been a, done a great job as well. So I'm, I'm happy to move that we direct the mayor or staff to send a piece of correspondence, whichever is deemed appropriate, to the ACHD Traffic Department to review and forward with whatever they deem as the most appropriate mechanism to articulate and educate about school zones in and around Rocky Mountain High School.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, supporting the request from our Transportation Commission, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, V. Carl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Sure.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
The motion carries. Can't say all ayes, because there is a sure in there. Item 6B is under our Planning Division and Public Works Department Report.
So, excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll start off, and Caleb can correct me where I go astray, but the ordinance that you have before you write, the draft ordinance that you have before you is intended to help us correct something that has popped up over the last two or three years. So we've had an ordinance in place for a long time that addressed situations where individual households may have had a septic system or a well that may have gone bad, and they needed to connect up to city water or city sewer, sewer in order to correct that. That ordinance didn't anticipate that there was going to be any change of use or anything else, just simply that somebody was in need, needed to find out whether or not city services were available and connect, even if they might not be eligible for annexation because they weren't contiguous to the city. Recently, within the past two or three years, we've had some situations that have arisen where it really hasn't been a household or whatever that's had a failing septic or failing well, we've had people that actually wanted to develop new things, outside of annexation, but have connection to city water and city sewer services, one or the other, sometimes both. And we didn't really have, the, the ordinance, the way it was written, basically said, well, if you apply to the Public Works Department, they will take a look at that and see if it's feasible and make a recommendation to the city council. But it didn't really address any land use issues, police, fire, or other parks department issues that may come about as a result of this new land use that was going to take place. So what we've done here, and Emily Kane's been instrumental in this, is prepare some changes to the ordinance that basically address that issue. Essentially, we still have ordinance that covers the situation where you got a single homeowner that just wants to get connected to water or sewer and can't annex into the city, and that's a fairly simple process, they would apply to the Public Works Department, we would provide a recommendation to the city council, and you guys would make the final decision on that. In this case, what we've added is some language to address the other situation where they have, if they want to do new development of some, some kind, it would come in, it would go through some process where everybody would get to take a look at that, and then collectively, we'd, we'd still provide recommendations to the city council, and it would be ultimately your decision. But it would also better take a look at land use, police, fire, and parks issues and concerns that may come about. So we're just really here, Caleb can chime in, to seek your direction to go ahead and move forward with getting this ordinance finalized. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Warren. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
One question, Warren, was the use of the phrase, "No change of use of the property." This, I'm talking about the added language. In, let's say, A1, for example, due to exigent circumstances and no change of use, is there any reason that it says that and not expansion of use? Is there a concern with expansion and not change, or vice versa?
Well, if the, this A1, or the first one in there, considers that situation where it's basically a homeowner who's got a failed water or septic system and is looking to connect, in that case, there is no change of use, they're still going to be a single-family residential home or whatever the case may be, but they just want sewer and water service. If you go to the, there's another section that says, "If there is a change of use, you follow this." So B is, if there is a change of use, you go through this process instead. So A is basically, no change of use, you just want water or sewer services. B is, if you want to do something new on this property, this is what the process will follow. And there's an A and a B for both water and sewer.
Madam Mayor, maybe that, I'm just missing the semantics of that. So if I'm a commercial business and I want to greatly expand my use, I'm not changing what I do, just going to expand it mightily, is that a distinction or no?
I think, based on, and we can look at the language and making that more clear if you think it needs to be, but I think our philosophy when we were drafting this is, yes, that would, that if you're making a substantial change to whatever it is that you're currently doing, then we need to look at that from other perspectives, so not just, is there a physical connection that can be made to the water or sewer system?
I, I thought there was a distinction between, I thought change of use was, we sell tires and now we're going to be a daycare, is a change of use versus...
Maybe we could add expansion of existing use or something, I don't, if you think we need to add some additional clarification language, I mean, that's the kind of way we're going to.
Just so there's not, Madam Mayor, just so there's not a gap, a circumstance that doesn't fit either category, that's all. Whatever ensures there's no gap in a circumstance where you're stuck, I'm knowing which call we can make.
Appreciate that.
Miss Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, with that change, I move that we accept the proposed draft to be brought back for, before us?
Madam Mayor. For a second, I just wanted to ask, would it be best, from Councilmember Borden's question, that we craft a definition of what change of use under this ordinance means? Because you're right, there may be a misconception, and generally in the planning context, change of use is, as you stated, you're doing one type of business and you're doing now a completely different type of business, residential to retail or something else. Here, when you talk about expansion of existing use, that is, that is a concern, and that may be resolved by simply defining what we mean when we say change of use. Because I think the committee discussion, I wasn't part of it, but the committee discussion, I think, was, as I think Warren stated, of, you have a residential use, it's going to remain a residential use. But if you do have an expansion of an existing use, that may be the gap you're concerned with, and maybe simply a clarification or definition of that term, we could be added, and then we could bring that back, either for a discussion point, if, if you'd like, or put that back on the agenda for a reading, whichever you prefer.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
All right, I have a motion in a second. What is the preferred approach? Would you rather see the language first, before you put it, publish it? Okay, we can put this on a future agenda, Mr. Nary, next week or in, in August, perhaps?
Madam Members of the council, yeah, I don't know what the workload this week looks like, so I don't know if it'll be next week or their, your next, your next full discussion or work session would be August 13th, so one of those. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
A question for, for Warren. First, thanks for bringing this to us, I appreciate it. Question is, do we have anything pressing that we need council action on this sooner rather than later? Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Cavanagh. Not that I'm aware of, we had one that we thought was going to be the next case, but after going through some various options, I think they've determined that they can go a different direction to the county than, and they won't seek city services, so.
And you are usually the first to know, well, maybe after planning, so.
One or the other.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think there is any concern if it waits till Aug.
August, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll put this on August 13th. Thank you. Okay, item seven is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
We will go into executive session pursuant to item State Code 74206, 1A and 206A.
J?
J?
That is J.
Did I say A, J?
I said A, but I also think there's J.
J.
2061J.
J, sorry.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and someone making up additional stuff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.